Good evening. We'll call to order the city commission meeting for El Dorado, November 18th, 2019. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Haines.
President.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badway?
Always here.
And Commissioner Wilkinson is absent this evening.
Alright, thank you. Next on our agenda would be invocation. We have to lead us tonight Pastor David Crook from First Southern Baptist Church.
Any requests for our city thing you know kept coming up that we should ask God to help with?
Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah, we're having a big community-wide Thanksgiving dinner on Saturday, aren't we? That's right, we'll cover that. Well, if you'll join me in prayer. God in heaven, I thank you for this city. I thank you for this place that we call home and the beautiful people that live here. It's a good city, it's a good town, a good place to live and breathe and have our families and our churches and our community organizations gathered. And we just ask your blessings on this city. May she continue to grow and prosper, and may she be a beautiful place. Lord, we do have things in our city that really need your attention. We have people whose lives are just suffering and hurting from all kinds of things that have gone on, and losses of jobs and the decisions that they've made and just there was brokenness everywhere. And I pray that you would move in our city and you'd heal our people who are suffering from things that humanity has caused and things that just from living life. And I just pray that you would come and you would, this would be a centerpiece of where you're working in our land of changing lives for eternity and for the good of our fellow man. I pray, oh God, for our city fathers, and I thank you for them, that even tonight as they're taking time away from their families, that you would bless them and you would look after them, that you would give them wisdom as they debate tonight, as they discuss, as they decide. Would you guide and lead them in ways that are good and righteous and ways that are helpful to our community. And we thank you, Lord, for our officers and our firemen that are, and our sheriffs who are looking out for us each and every day, and pray that you have protection on them, you're guiding for them. May their nights be event-free and may they be judicious in all that they do. I pray, oh God, that you would just meld our city together in one beautiful fellowship this Saturday, that people from all kinds of organizations and churches will be serving and doing and just giving you thanks and enjoying each other's company as we remember the blessings that we enjoy here in this community. So would you please bless that? And as we have Christmas time coming up, Lord, and the season that we're going to remember the beautiful gift from heaven of your son coming to live among us, that we would certainly have a wonderful time of sharing such wonderful goodness toward our fellow neighbors. And would you please be with those who are not looking forward to that day because of the losses they've experienced this last year and the reminders of their absence during these holidays, and just comfort their hearts as well. Tonight, we want to stop, give you thanks, and ask these blessings in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you. Thank you. Next we have on our agenda would be the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have the Skelly Student Leadership Team here tonight to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? First, I think, tell us, Tabitha's going to hand you the microphone there. Tell us your name. There you go.
My name's Brittany, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is my school.
My name is Lainey Bright. My favorite thing about El Dorado is the swimming pool.
My name is Carden Yelson, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the community.
My name is Jackson. And my favorite thing about El Dorado is the YMCA.
There you go.
Can you sing the song?
Wonderful. Well, would everyone rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? He's going to start it off. There you go. Ready?
(Inaudible)
Thank you guys.
Thank you to the Skelly Student Leadership Team.
Come back and see us.
Yep.
We'll expect the routine, guys.
That's great. Thanks. No proclamations or recognitions tonight. Personal appearances none. Moves us to public comments. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Okay, please state your name and address up here at the podium. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Hendricks, and I live at 1114 West Kansas Avenue. I've lived in that house for the last two years, and the house that used to exist at 1110 West Kansas Avenue apparently burned down and has been taken out. The garage finally was knocked over by whoever owns the property, and it's laying on the ground collecting skunks and wild cats and whatever else shows up. I don't know if there's a city ordinance, a city policy about leaving your junk pile laying on the ground or not, but that needs to be addressed if there is. Also, around the corner from me, I'm across the alley from a house at, got to look at my notes here, 1105 and 1107 Cave Springs. 1107, I believe, is, it's a blue house that the porch has fallen off of it, and the roof on the west side is caved in on it. The storm cellar door has been taken off, the hinges on the back of the house, and the homeless people and the drug users are using that basement as a place to hide out. That house and the other one, 1105, all have, I believe, that the city's orange stickers that say stay out of it. They've been in place for two years also. Did we wait for them to catch on fire like a friend of mine's house, well, across the street from him? The drug addicts got it set on fire and the city finally took it down, or...
Did you say 1114?
I live at 1114.
You do, okay.
1110 Kansas and 1105 and 07 Cave Springs, correct?
Correct.
Were any of these on the list that we just did?
Nope, they are not.
Well, as you were, we, I mean, we've just sent hits out on a bunch of houses just like what you're describing to us. So is it on your list of...
If it has a red sticker, it's on the list.
Okay.
So it's either being dealt with in some manner through code enforcement in the municipal court as a violation of unsafe, unfit structure. That list is pretty lengthy. I was able to put together a map last week for David that I think he's eventually going to get to you all to explain. And it shows a number of red stickered homes, so the dangerous unfit homes in El Dorado versus, there's also the houses demoed in the last five years. As we talked, when we went through this combination, the 16,000 we have available to go in and basically take care of other people's problems that are affecting neighborhoods and adjacent landowners is, it's not much, but we're trying. And we've done a lot through active enforcement, and I'm glad you came here tonight, and we'll definitely take a look at the cellar and the dangerous part of it. That the last thing we want is a kid roam in the neighborhood or something to get hurt.
Well, when you walk out of your front porch in the morning on the way to work and you're greeted by a family of skunks up on your porch because the cats have run them out of the junk pile two houses down, it's a little disconcerting. Now, I know the city ordinance doesn't allow me to shoot them.
What would be, what would be really helpful is we have a petition that you can come to our office and sign, and if you talk to your other neighbors, and that helps us a lot of times in municipal court to show the judge that, you know, there's neighbors, they've signed a petition, you know, they want to see something gone, so that's helpful.
It's the old squeaky wheel theory, Mr. Hendricks.
I'm sorry.
It's the old squeaky wheel theory. So anything, like Scott said, if that petition, if you could help maybe get that petition signed, that would give our engineering department some, because to go, you know, to take a house down or haul it off, we have to get a court order, don't we?
Well, yeah, and what we need is those folks in the neighborhood tells us what's going on, because we don't have the time to go by all of these often, and you guys are the most in touch with that neighborhood. And if you see things like rodents and animal control could be called on those issues, and dangerous things that we can go in and, like cellar doors, making sure those get covered.
And that's where I was going to go with it. Have you called animal control yet about the skunks? I might, I'm truly asking, because it...
And I haven't this year, because what I did last year, the answer was, we don't catch skunks.
Okay.
I mean, I'll shoot them, but that just gets me in court.
Please don't do that.
Yeah.
Please, you know, I guess, what address is that place at? Where you're saying?
The one that's down on the ground is 1110 West Kansas Avenue.
Brad, can we throw that on Jay's list to take a look at?
We trap, we will trap during the wintertime when weather's cold, in case we get domestic animals. But we trap the rest of the time during the year. As soon as the nighttime temperature is above freezing, we'll set traps out. So like this whole week, we've been trapping. So I don't know who told me we didn't trap, but...
No, 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 I, you know, this happens. I'm just, I guess what I'm trying to...
I've got it on, I've been typing this video.
Okay, so Brad, we...
Okay. Well, and I know from having been a hunter in the old days that in the wintertime, skunk come in to the city.
Right.
Because it's easier to find a place that you can crawl into or under than it is out in the county. And there's more available food.
Well, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and that, seriously, that petition gives them, gives them, as you can imagine, we have a lot of houses that are listed with lots of places that have those red tags. I see them all the time. Well, we need something to bring one, if you want one particular to be looked at, we need something like a petition to bring that higher up onto the list.
Well, there were three houses on Cave Springs. The first three, there's the church, and then the next three houses.
Right.
One of those houses, somebody's gone in, it's a stone house. They're in the process of renovating it.
Okay.
If it was mine, I wouldn't renovate it with the junk sent to the Westland, but it's not mine.
Right.
Okay. I know exactly where, I mean, this is just down the street from where I live, and I know exactly where you're talking about, so.
Great, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address, anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Agenda items were in your commission packet sent out earlier this week. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Done, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries forward to zero. With no old business, we'll move to new business. Item nine on our agenda is the Library Board Charter Ordinance. Kind of had, we've had a little bit of discussion about this, the opportunity to charter out and make the library board appointee from the commission, anyone the commission so choose rather than be honed in on only the mayor. Any further question or comment or description on this?
You can pick up or dip.
Is there ordinance number?
There better be.
Charter ordinance number 23.
Two, three.
Twenty what?
23.
23.
Not a charter ordinance. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Charter Ordinance number 23, a Charter Ordinance exempting the city of El Dorado, Kansas from KSA Section 12-1222, and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? None, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Haines?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes. Okay, motion carries forward to zero.
I will note that that will take 60 days to go into effect. We have to publish that and give time for a protest petition if the public so wishes, because it's a charter ordinance. And so it will take effect sometime in late January, probably the first regular meeting in January.
Okay, thank you for that. Alright, next on our agenda would be CNG compressor purchase. We have Mr. Meyer here to talk to us about CNG compressors.
We had, back in March or April, received a rebate from the Department of Energy for converting our entire refuse fleet to natural gas. That sum was about $40,000 is what Department of Energy and Kansas Gas Service rebated us for doing so. At the time, we installed, I'll go back in history just a little bit, 2013 when we started our natural gas conversion for vehicles, we put in a small 12-gallon-an-hour compressor size to handle 10 to 15 vehicles. And we thought if we got 10 to 15 vehicles online and it worked, that we would be doing great. Well, today we have nearly 25 vehicles and an entire department operating off natural gas at a rate of about 70 cents a gallon, a gas gallon equivalent, or a diesel gallon equivalent. So the compressor that we have today has about 13,000 hours on it. It has been meticulously rebuilt at 3,000 hours every year. It's a rotary-type compressor. We've done several things to prolong its life. It is not out of life, but it's at the point that it makes me nervous when we are running our entire refuse fleet on natural gas. The sewer distribution folks run their flusher vac truck is a natural gas vehicle, both front and the pony motor in the back are natural gas, so they rely on that in times that they need to do sewer work. Not to mention, we have a fire apparatus that's on natural gas. We've got a lot of other vehicles on natural gas. All of our supervisor vehicles are on natural gas. So we have a lot of vehicles on there. The money from the Department of Energy was earmarked to replace the compressor. When one became available, that was a little bit larger. And so that has, that has come about, that there is, there's a 50-horse Angie compressor that is available to us. And so because the price was over $50,000, it requires commission approval as well as it being a sole source, there's no bids that were taken to purchase it. So it comes to you folks to approve the purchase. I said we originally spec for 10 to 15 vehicles. That's not counting all of the other traffic that we get selling to the public as well. So I can tell you, last week it was a steady line of vehicles. Every day we did two to three vehicles, which is not really as normal. Normally we do seven to 10 a month. We were doing that many a week last week. So something in the stars aligned, I don't know. AT&amp;T did get rid of a bunch. They replaced a bunch of their fleet out with additional transit-type vehicles. And so they sold a bunch up in Kansas City, they sold a bunch down in Oklahoma. So there was people moving those vehicles around, and we saw probably 10 or so of those. We also saw some odd ones that we'd never seen before. So, but we are, we are selling quite a bit to the general public, it appears. Our, I call it a grant, our reimbursement was $40,000. The balance, the $14,000 additionally will come from the CNG fund, which can absolutely pay the rest of that balance, so.
Okay. Great.
How many, how many vehicles can you run on this one now?
Well, it's how quickly it refills our storage. We're only limited to how many vehicles we can fill based on the amount of storage that we have. And we've got three 80-gallon spheres in the back, plus an additional 120 gallons inside the compressor station itself. So it's not really how many vehicles it can fill, it's how fast it can refill our storage. So at 50...
I agree. You said this unit was sized for 15 vehicles.
Right. And we base that based off of how big our equipment was. I would say this is probably a 25 to 30 gallon equivalent an hour, where we're at 12. So what that'll do is that'll knock down the amount of time that compressor's running, so you're not going to, you're not going to have nearly the amount of hours on it that we have on our current one. Our current one just runs literally all the time because of the amount of fuel we're going through and using. So that's why the hours stacked up on it, stack up on it as quickly as they do. We lived within our means when we bought this, when we did the first one, and so now we've got to increase our means.
It's paying off. It's paying off. Investment's paying off.
Honestly, the station took about 19 months to pay back in savings just in the refuse department alone. So.
No, I'm a big...
19 months is a pretty good payback on something like that.
I agree.
Okay, any further questions about compressor purchase? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of the compressor for CNG station, for CNG services in the amount of $54,000.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries forward to zero. Thank you. Project number, next on our agenda was project number 543, Union Tank Car Water Main Project. Public hearing date?
Yes, we're asking you to set the public hearing for this project for December 2nd of this year. This project was the extension of a water line to serve fire needs of Union Tank Car as they went through pretty significant expansion at their facility north of 9th Avenue along the west branch of the Walnut River. The final cost for the project is $277,544.76. Improvement district costs, so this is Union Tank, will be paying $204,015 via either, via special assessment. I think they are going to make the determination if they're going to let that spread over 20 years or go ahead and cut us a check. The remainder of those costs are coming through via the water fund and the economic development fund. When this project was first authorized, some scope changed, so we increased the diameter of the pipeline. It sets us up well for the future. It gives us another loop to head west and west of Topeka Road and south of Refinery Road in that undeveloped land. Also, it includes, and you see in this total cost, it includes things that we normally don't associate with the project, like water meters, vaults, those sorts of things. This is the first project that we've had a developer come in and pay for as far as water infrastructure, specifically because we're typically meeting their domestic needs, and this was more for fire suppression.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? Entertained a motion to set for public hearing on December 2nd, 2019.
I move to set the public hearing for 6:30 PM on December 2nd, 2019, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of project number 543 and further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries forward to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the street naming ordinance. As we discussed in our work session last Wednesday, name a street in the industrial park. What do we have here? Do we have the name Garcia Court?
Do we not want to put a full name on there? Do we not want to put a full name on there? Okay.
So no, appreciate everybody's willingness to move forward on that. This is going to be a neat deal, so. Do I want to make the motion? I'd be happy to make the motion. Alright, I'll make the motion. Move that, what's the ordinance number?
G1315.
1315. Alright, thank you. I make, I move the ordinance number G1315, an ordinance naming a street in the city of El Dorado be approved, El Dorado, Kansas be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? All in favor, oh, I guess, go through roll call.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Mayor Haines?
Yes. Motion passes forward to zero. Thank you. I don't have very many of my names written in these motions, those things.
We're going to do something, present something?
Yeah, I'm working, I'll keep everybody informed. At this point, he does not know about it. And they're talking about having a, they have a company Thanksgiving coming up, so perhaps then I'll let everybody know if that's what you're to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will keep everybody informed.
Just want to make sure that we, you know, we did do something nice for it.
Been working with BG to do that in the...
Get his own sign.
Appropriate way, yeah.
Get him his own copy of the sign.
Thank you. That was, that is the thought, so thank you. Reports. We're on to report city commission and advisory boards. I can start with you since Kendricks called.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And do you want me to say anything?
I did go that loudly, baby.
I mean, I can't officially say anything. I, I went to the library board meeting, not just unofficially, just as a member of the public, and there, it's pretty obvious, there are a lot, that the people that are on that board are very passionate about it. And they, and they, the meeting, I don't know if they're all like that, but the meeting I went to was quite spirited. So they've got, and then the friends of the library gave a report, and they are obviously passionate about it too. So they've got a few things they're wanting to do that they're going to fund. And if I'm picked to be on that, I'm excited about it. I think it'll be cool. I think it's a great facility, and we're lucky to have it.
Yes, we are.
And that's all I've got.
Okay.
It's nice to see the basketball court there used, it gets used quite a bit when you're driving by there. I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
CTC meets tomorrow. Don't really have anything either, except for happy Thanksgiving and...
Okay. I don't have anything in particular, other than to say this is my last full commission meeting, and it's been, it's been great working with you guys. Thank you.
Oh, I did, there was one other thing, I'm sorry. Saturday, we had a pretty big water leak downtown, 100 block of... Saturday, we had a pretty big water leak downtown one hundred block of North Main and I went, I was out running around Sunday morning and stopped and talked to Dave Sungren and they had a lot of substantial damage down there. But he told me that the city did everything they could to, he was very happy with the attention and, and the swiftness that they got down there and he was very grateful for it, so I just wanted to pass that on to Kurt and his people. I think, I don't know, Brad had people down there, but okay, forget Brad. But anyway, Dave was very thankful for the help that the city got, even though it was our water main break that broke.
Glad to hear that.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we'll move on to city manager report.
Okay, got a few things real quickly, I'll check into this as quickly as I can. Baller Community College reviewed and approved the neighborhood authorization program, so all of the taxing jurisdictions have approved it. It's been sent off to the Kansas Attorney General's Office and they review it. They have a period of time where they can either provide comments back to the jurisdiction or it automatically is renewed. So we are now in that final holding pattern awaiting the Attorney General's approval or, or the cure period passed. The city will need to amend the budget, the twenty nineteen budget for several funds. We'll have a public hearing on December second. The funds to be amended will include the debt service fund. We have to amend it from two point two million dollars to four point three six million dollars, and that's to permanently finance that four-year temporary note that was inadvertently not included in the budget. The water fund has to be amended from twelve point three six million dollars to twelve point five eight million dollars for various emergency projects in the year end eighteen and that were completed in nineteen, including, well, that equaled fifty-six, approximately fifty-six thousand dollars. Repairs of the pump station at Prairie Trails that equaled about seventy-seven, two thousand dollars in annual lake operations and maintenance of ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Sewer fund needs to be amended from two point four five million dollars to two point six seven million dollars for emergency projects completed in two thousand nineteen equalling about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And finally, the CNG fund will need to be amended from seventeen thousand, nine hundred dollars to ninety-one thousand, two seventy-eight for a federal grant and to authorize use of remaining fund balance for the purchase of the compressor that you all approved earlier in the meeting. In addition to that, there's a couple of meetings that are coming up. I hope everyone likes meetings. The Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Regional Economic Area Partnership are inviting local elected officials to a reception on November twenty-fifth from five-thirty to seven-thirty in Wichita. I didn't know if anyone had looked at that or wanted to attend that in Wichita.
No.
Baller Community College has scheduled a Butler Legislative Luncheon on December second, college beginning at eleven-thirty. This is a great opportunity for local entities, the county, the city, the college, et cetera, to meet with local legislators, talk about local issues. How many, will anybody be attending that event on December second? It's like an R S P P.
I will.
Okay, moving on, let's see. And then on Friday, KDOT hosted a local consult meeting in Wichita. This is where they bring local governance from around the, the regions, I believe there's five or six of those, and they talk about statewide priorities and regional priorities. Unfortunately, the Boyer Road, K two fifty-four and I one thirty-five interchange did not make the top ten priority list for the region based upon prioritization of the projects submitted, although KDOT is, so KDOT's working to put all of the projects in the region and the state together into the next major transportation program since T-Works. So it is a little disappointing that that project wasn't included. However, we've been told that KDOT plans to review all the projects for two years, so those are subject to change based on a number of different factors. So we keep that project on the R four front and then anytime there's a local consult, we'll try to appeal to ours to be, so we can try to get that project moving forward.
That's too bad because they're gonna overlay two fifty-four this year. That would've went good with that.
Yeah, and probably a big driver of that, as I've communicated to you all, the KTA, KDOT and the city are partnering together on a conceptual study of that interchange. And so part of that is, they, they probably don't wanna move that project forward yet because we don't know what it's gonna look like. But the study that we're kind of in the beginning process of, will hopefully give us a little more clarity on that. And so hopefully, because of that study being completed, we'll be able to move up in the project list. From, from a community news standpoint, we have the create a turkey contest going on from now through November nineteenth. We're asking children from pre-kindergarten to fifth grade to turn in their artwork of Thanksgiving Day turkeys to the Parks and Rec Department before five P.M. and they're displaying them and I believe there might be maybe a prize. City offices will be closed next week on Thursday and Friday in celebration of the Thanksgiving holiday. We encourage everyone to shop local on November thirtieth and then the Old Fashioned Christmas Parade is coming up on December seventh, beginning at five-thirty. And then I also have these last two. VFW Post eleven seventy-four is having their annual Thanksgiving community dinner to include ham, turkey and all the fixins plus desserts on Thursday, November twenty-eighth from eleven-thirty A.M. to two P.M. It's open to the public at the Fred Priestley Post eleven seventy-four at two eleven North Main in El Dorado. If you're not able to make it, they also have meals on wheels delivering to local residents from eleven-thirty to one-thirty P.M. Please call ahead between nine A.M. to noon so I can get you your dinner on time. That number's three one six, three two one, ninety-five, twenty-three. That's three one six, three two one, ninety-five, twenty-three. And then finally, on Saturday, the twelfth annual community pre-Thanksgiving dinner will be at the four-H community building. That is Saturday, November twenty-third from eleven to one-thirty. It is free to the public, donations are welcome. Again, that's at the four-H community building on Saturday from eleven to one-thirty P.M. That's all I got.
David, I have one more thing. On December second, at the next commission meeting, we will be celebrating Mayor Haines' service to the city of El Dorado at six P.M., I think? Six or six fifteen, if you remember?
It's gonna take more than fifteen minutes.
I, I think it's at six, but we'll have some order of some things in the hall and I believe there'll be some singers here for a little festive Christmas music before the meeting, so. That will happen, we'll also be honoring service awards for employees that night.
Great. Thank you.
May a hundred, may a hundred years from now they dress up like you on Halloween.
Well, they'll have it, they got a picture on the wall, they can try and, they got a target. They got a target on the wall. Thank you for that. Next we have third quarter financial-
I got the third quarter financial report, I'm not gonna go through this. We just recently completed the second quarter and there's, there's not a lot of things that have changed from this to that, but you have the presentation in your packets, so if you review it and you have any questions, let me know. I'm just gonna highlight just a couple of things. Predominantly, it's largely the same format that we've been trying to use. Just to highlight a couple of things real quickly that we've been going on. The Business Park Marketing Plan as well as the Industrial Park Master Plan, candid, candid marketing has been selected by El Dorado Inc. and the city to develop a marketing program. They've, they were in town, you'll recall, not too long ago, and they were interviewing community partners. They are currently putting that marketing program together in draft form and they will be reporting back to the city and El Dorado Inc. here very soon and we'll be sharing those results with, with you all here very, very shortly. Kind of related to that, on a kind of separate track, El Dorado Inc. is also working on a task force to identify target industries that will parallel that. And so once we have the marketing program, target industries, we'll put those together and we'll be moving lockstep forward on marketing both the industrial park as well as the business park. And then the Lake Development Master Plan, the thing I want to point out here as per our conversation in the last work session, staff is putting together a phase one marketing plan to be, again, being implemented in the first quarter of two thousand twenty. We've started that effort conversationally and we'll be presenting something to you all in draft format here very soon. Capital projects, Douglas Road design is underway, we're looking to bid that in spring of two thousand twenty. The Runway Resling project has been postponed to two thousand twenty. And then the Bike Path Solar Lighting Project, which we've been waiting on now for a while, we are still waiting on that. The lights were backordered and it's already assuming that they are being shipped and that we will be receiving those hopefully here pretty quickly. The Bike Path Phase Three, we did require approval of the BNSF license agreement, that's been reviewed by management and by legal counsel and looks good to go, so we'll be getting that before you all for approval so that we can get to a spring bid letting on that project very quickly. And the rest of these are, the one thing that I do wanna point out on the Summit Park Shelter, if you go by there, the construction has started on that shelter and it won't be long before we get the roof up and we get that, we get that shelter completed. The Holly Frontier Raw Water Clarification Study is pending a decision to proceed with Phase Two. From a financial standpoint, things look to be performing very well. Sales tax is up a little bit compared to last year. Last year, as you know, we had our record-breaking year and this year we're just ahead of that by a little bit, so hopefully folks will get out on the thirtieth of November and shop local so we can take that record to the finish line and continue to carry that out. Transit gas tax, a little bit low this year, which is a little surprising since we're in another turnaround compared to last year, but other than that, we don't know really why that's lower compared to your quarter to quarter. Other than that, most of these revenues are on tack with where they should be, as well as our expenses are looking at where they would be for this time in the third quarter. So again, I'm not gonna go through all of that, but you have the information in front of you, so if you, if you look through that and you have any questions, feel free to let me know. And then we'll have our fourth quarter coming up here in the next couple of weeks or months, I guess, so.
Budget bar that's blue, that's the annual budget rather than the third quarter?
Yeah, so the blue budget number reflects what is authorized for the annual budget, is not the quarterly budget.
Okay.
So generally speaking, for expenses, you wanna be roughly below the seventy-five percent of that blue bar and then for revenues, ideally, we'd like to be above the seventy-five point of that bar. That's a rough estimate.
Okay. Great, any questions? Thank you, David. Next on our agenda is executive session for purpose of discussing ongoing litigation. How much time do we have?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. Seven fifteen?
Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Move to reassess and to executive session pursuant to the attorney client privilege exception under KSA seven five dash four three one nine B two for the purposes of discussing ongoing litigation and to reconvene the meeting at seven thirty-five P.M. in the city commission.
A second?
Second.
Okay. I have Christopher Badway with second, Mr. Lewis, to move to executive session until seven thirty-five.